All right, so it is 6:30 and we are starting the June 25th School Committee meeting. And I hand it directly over to you, Joe?
Yes. So item number one is where the superintendent grabs the gavel. Thank you for handing it to me, I appreciate it. I'm gonna run the whole meeting now. And at this time, I am accepting nominations for Chairperson of the Norton School Committee for the FY21 school year.
Who would nominate, Colonel Gallagher?
I second.
Ms. Gallagher's been nominated by Mr. Savas, seconded by Ms. Stern. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Mr. Savas, I need a second by...
Second.
Second.
Ms. Stern. All those in favor of Ms. Gallagher becoming the Chair for FY21. Roll call, Ms. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Savas?
Yes, but I thought you cast the single, the sole vote in this case.
We can do a sole vote as well, yes, if that's what you like. So the, I'll take a motion for a singular vote of Ms. Gallagher becoming the Chair of the School Committee. You can do it that way.
So moved. Sorry, guys, that kind of really delayed us a little bit, I thought that'd be faster, sorry.
So it's been moved by Savas, by Stern, seconded by Savas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Ms. Gallagher, welcome to the new chair. Ms. Stern, thank you for a wonderful year, you were fantastic, and enjoy retirement as a member.
Thank you.
Kathleen, great job.
Thank you.
Kathleen had the extended stay.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah?
Thanks Kathleen.
Aye. I wish I could hand you the gavel, but I don't have it.
I can, I can let you keep that.
No.
I don't mind sharing my duties. So I take over with the vote for the Vice Chairperson?
That is correct, you can open nominations for the Vice Chair.
Okay, so I'll open nominations for the Vice Chair. Can I nominate?
You may.
Okay, so I nominate Dinesh Savas. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Sheri.
Close the nominations?
I close the nominations.
Motion to close.
Motion, motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Savas with Cohen second, and then the vote.
Okay, so vote to select Dinesh Savas as Vice Chairperson of the School Committee.
Just a second, we have to actually vote to close the nominations first.
Oh, vote to close, sorry, vote to close the nomination. So do we do a roll call for that?
Yeah, because you're virtual.
Okay, so a vote to close the nomination for Vice Chairperson of the School Committee, Kathleen Stern?
Aye.
Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Dan Shidi?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher, yes, and Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
Okay, so now we vote to...
On the motion.
On the motion. So, let's see, is there a motion to approve Dinesh Savas as Vice Chairperson of the School Committee?
So moved.
So Sheri and Kathleen?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments? Not seeing any, so vote to approve Dinesh Dan Shidi?
Aye.
Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher, yes, and Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
Perfect, so. So Dinesh, it's your year to help me be Chairperson.
Sounds good, you got it.
And so now we...
So far you've been great.
Great. So we also do the Legislative Representative?
You need a nomination for one member to be the representative.
Okay, so this is a nomination for a member of the School Committee to be the Legislative Representative.
Who's our current rep? Is it Dan?
Dan.
Dan.
Dan, do you want to do it again? Dan, do you want to do it again?
He's silent. Does that work, Dan?
Yeah, it works, it's fine. All right, I would nominate Dan Shidi.
Is there a second?
Second.
Savas, Cohen, close the nominations?
So I'd like to close the nominations for the Legislative Representative, and now I open for...
Now take a vote to close the nominations.
Okay, is there a vote to close the nominations?
So moved.
Sheri.
Stern, and now you can take the call, take the vote.
So a vote to elect Dan Shidi as the Legislative Representative for the School Committee, Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher, yes, and Dan Shidi?
Yes.
Great, and then we are voting to...
Hey, Carolyn, can I go real quick and ask a question? Joe, is there any reason why we could not nominate for the rest of the positions and vote as one?
You can, you can take a motion to take two reps for negotiations from one for capital as one binding vote.
So in the interest of time, I think we should do that, just so we're not going to make any proposals, et cetera.
So we will open nominations for both, the members of the Employee Negotiations Representative and Capital Improvements Committee Representative?
If there's, if there's no objection?
And, Ted? I'm sorry?
If there's no objection, Carolyn and I are in the middle of the negotiation, and I think we should probably continue that.
And I'm also fine staying on capital.
Great. And Sped, is that you Kathleen?
Yep, yes.
Is that something you'd like to continue to do?
Yep, no problem.
So if we're staying in our current sort of positions, how do we have to do?
So you need, somebody can just move my recommendation that the negotiations consist of Mr. Savas and Ms. Gallagher, the capital Ms. Cohen, and CPAC Ms. Stern, that would be the motion.
So moved.
Savas moved it, Cohen seconded, you now can take a vote.
Okay, so a vote to keep, do I have to say this all?
No, you can say as noted for the record.
Okay, as noted for the record. So moved. Kathleen?
Second.
There a second, Dan?
We've already moved it, guys.
Take the vote.
Just take the vote.
Okay, the vote, sorry, Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Dan Shidi?
Yes.
Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
And Carolyn Gallagher, yes, so we are set with that?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Also, there was, on sort of our list was a school liaison, if I remember correctly from last year, we changed that, so moving forward, is there any concern or conversation about changing kind of what we did this year, which was to have our parent board representatives come to our School Committee meetings? Does that work for everybody as we did this year?
I think that worked.
Great, so is that okay, Dr. Byetta, do we need to do anything with that?
No, you do not, don't.
Okay, so that was on our list, but we can just keep it as is without a vote?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone, so now we'll vote to approve minutes on the June 11th, 2020 Remote School Committee meeting. A motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we will vote to approve the minutes, let's see, Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Dan Shidi?
Yes.
Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Dinesh Savas?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher, yes. Great, warrants?
Yep, I have approved and, I have reviewed and approved the following warrant, June 18th, 2020, for $252,364. I wish to enter that into public record.
Great, thanks Sheri. Next, we'll move to the vote to approve the Norton Teachers Association contract extension for 2020, 2021, Dr. Byetta?
Just one second, Carolyn, I mean, Sheri, did you want to stay signing the warrants, or is this the time that we would change it if you wanted to not do it?
It's fine, I'm fine continuing, you're my backup, right?
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks, though. You reminded me.
Nobody else has gone.
Madam Chair, through you, the Norton School Committee's negotiations team consisting of Mr. Savas and yourself as the Chair have come to a tentative agreement with the Norton Teachers Association on the teacher's contract, on an agreement of a one-year contract of a 1% increase to the salary schedule and supplemental compensation, and an additional longevity payment at the 10 through 30 years of $500 for a one-year contract for the teachers. It has been ratified by the Norton Teachers Association, and tonight you need to take a formal vote to accept or deny this contract offer that has been negotiated by your subcommittee.
And is there a motion to approve the Norton Teachers Association contract extension as defined by Dr. Byetta?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, oh, do we open sort of discussion?
Yeah, it can be open for anyone to comment on in the public, yes.
So any public comments? I'm not seeing any, Jen? No, so we will move to vote that we approve the Norton Teachers Association contract. Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn, yes.
Thank you to the committee, and I will, I have the contract signed, and I will sign it based on this vote on your behalf, and then we can do the formal one at some point when you come through, because we'll allow for it to go forward.
Thank you, and thanks to our teachers, I know that this has been really sort of a very difficult sort of few months, so we really appreciate working so closely together. Vote to approve Norton Paraprofessional Library Media Tech Employees Association contract extension for 2020, 2021, Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a one-year contract as well, this is for a $1 increase to steps 1 through 10, the elimination of step 1, making it step 2, the new step 1, creating a new step 10, and a $200 added to each category of degree stipend of Associate, Bachelor, and Masters.
Thank you, so do we have a motion to approve the Paraprofessional Library Media Tech Employees contract for the 2020, 2021 year?
So moved.
Was that you, Sheri?
Second.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Nope, seeing none, we will vote, so Sheri?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn, yes.
Thank you very much, I've also signed that for the record on your behalf, I just want to publicly thank Ms. Horton, Sarah Horton, that was one of the three folks, Rob McCoy and Diane Krugnelli, who have been their three folks, they have a huge team, but we were able to come together on behalf of the subcommittee, Dinesh and Carolyn, and try to work something that was fair and as much as possible in these really difficult times, I appreciate their work, I appreciate them, their dialogue, and we hope to settle the three-year contract sooner than later, starting this fall, with the teachers and the paraprofessionals as one contract.
Thank you, everybody, moving on, vote to approve the School Committee meeting dates for 2020, 2021.
Madam Chair, through you, as printed, you have it in front of you, it starts with the, to be quite honest, this says the 25th of September, but later on tonight, I'm going to request that we potentially have a couple of dates in July and August available to us, because of the circumstances that we're under, and making sure that the committee continues to be involved in all of the changes and requirements we're going to have for the fall, but our traditional calendar is before you, starting the 25th of September and running through June 10th, it doesn't have specific release for town meetings, but those town meeting general dates for the month are unnoted in there as well, it does require a vote.
Great. Thank you.
Before we vote on this?
Sure.
September 25th, Joe, is a Friday? It's a Friday, are we, do we mean the 24th?
You're right.
If we don't, I might miss that meeting, September 25th.
Yeah, that should be the 24th, not the 25th, which makes me, everything else is correct, I guess, because the next one is correct.
Yeah, I think everything else is correct.
I wonder why that went on there? I guess we missed it?
It happens.
Thank you for correcting that, with the correction as noted.
Do we vote with the correction as noted?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the School Committee meeting dates for 2020, 21 with the correction as noted?
So moved.
Thanks Sheri, second, thanks Kathleen, any discussion?
Quick question, do we, what if we're still in a remote meeting status at that point, do we just have to change that on the announcement? Correct. Okay. Correct, your meeting dates and how they, your meeting dates or your meeting dates, how you go about your meeting dates becomes part of the 48-hour notification.
Okay.
I'd like to half-heartedly log my objection to Thursdays being the day that we do the meetings on.
Well, considering that Tommy boy is playing for the other team now, I wouldn't worry too much about him.
Good try, Dan.
Eve Wolfie.
Lucky to eat meat this year.
We'll see, so let's see, so we can vote to approve the School Committee meeting, meeting dates with the revision as noted for the 2020, 2021 school year, Sheri Cohen?
Yes.
Kathleen?
You're muted.
Muted.
Yeah, thanks Kathleen, Dan?
Yes.
And Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn, yes. Let's see, so now we'll move on to a personnel update, Dr. Byetta?
Thank you so much, as printed, you have that before you, but I would like to spend at least a minute thanking the folks that are leaving us after many years of service to the district, so a few folks are going out either in September or December, so we can take care of the December 1st person later, but Ms. Eileen Sikora, who's been at Norton Middle School and in the district, Emily Packer, occupational therapist, Jordy Sias, a paraprofessional, Roberta Friedman, a special educator, education teacher, and Cynthia Brezner, and also a special education teacher, I just want to thank them, typically we celebrate them, we have parties and we have a few laughs, and this year, of course, that isn't happening right now, but we hope that that will be happening in the near future with them, we want them to know that, you know, we continue, I know that the Teachers Association continues to work on trying to find the best way to say a formal goodbye when it can happen, but I want to thank them personally for their work for many years in the district.
So, well, thank you, I appreciate knowing, I did have a question.
Yes.
One of the things that has been, I think, rather glaring, if we're kind of watching news reports and kind of paying attention to other public school districts that are kind of close to us in regards to the number of changes that are happening with staff, is the amount of retirements related to kind of Norton's, I think, in a lot of ways, not getting hit as hard by kind of the drastic changes of finances due to COVID-19, in regard to why our numbers are so much lower in layoffs and changes in comparison to other towns?
Yeah, it's a great question, so there's a couple of things that are in play, first, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, the Board of Selectmen, Mike Units, and myself, through a process have determined that we feel comfortable with a number going forward that's different from the original proposals that have been put forth by departments, including the School Department, the biggest, the biggest question mark that we have is everything to do with jobs that are not earned, and right now, we just are not seeing or being told that it ought to be addressed of five or 10%, or 1% or 2%, if anything, today's announcement of the changes for the fall and having to create three models, actually, thank you to the Commissioner of Education, I anticipate potential for millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars being placed into K-12 education for the purposes of responding to the C-19 situation and the three models, so what does that mean, I don't really know, what we have been told is that there's a potential that there's going to be a budget coming out that is agreed upon by the House, the Senate, and the Governor, that there'd be, if you will, very little debate, that this would be the budget to try to save, I will tell you that Boston Public Schools and the Mayor of Boston today announced an $80 million increase to the Boston Public Schools, they are the biggest public school system in the state, and they have no layoffs, they are making a commitment that, based upon what they went through and what they believe they're going to be going through in the fall, the other part that I think is really important is, we've been a pretty, you know, close to the bone district for quite a while, I mean, 10 years, if you remember, unfortunately, my predecessor and Dinesh will remember this, 10 years of an average of 1.1% means that the creation of new programming and support has been driven around trying to keep costs down, i.e., Gene Sullivan, who's on the call today with us as the Director of PPS for the last 18 years, really, or 16 years, I think it is, or something like that, Gene, 11 years, sorry, and seven years as a teacher, I forgot that part, we've created a ton of new programming, and so we've really tried to keep those costs down as well, and none of it's perfect, I mean, it's a daily routine, if you will, a yearly routine, but it's been only recently that we've seen two and a halfs, and three and fours when you count the fall, you know, the going joke is that it's been my administration since I've gotten here that we've gone from money at the fall town meeting, and I've tried to justify the rationale behind that, so we, you know, we just don't have a lot of fluff in our budgets to be able to just, you know, eliminate positions, I mean, every single classroom in our district this year is starting at the elementary levels, either already in the high 18s or already approaching 24, 25, 26, so, you know, there just isn't a lot there, and so I think that's part of the reason, again, this could change, we could be talking, and Mike Units and I did a taping the other day with a bunch of folks, we could be talking in October about cutting positions, not adding positions, or we typically don't add positions, we add to our budgets like materials and supplies, we could be doing the opposite this year, we could be actually potentially cutting positions, so that's the protocol and the process that we're going to go with, and hopefully, based upon this C-19 situation and the mess that we've been in, we're able to get state support and local support more so than anything else.
Thank you for kind of sharing that, I think retirements are always so hard because it's, you never want to lose anybody who has really dedicated their service, and as a parent who's had two children already, or three now, I forgot, I had an eighth grader that graduated a few weeks ago, as three, it seems like a lot of these teachers are teachers that are familiar to me, so of course, thank you to all of those who will be leaving, and we wish you well, Dr. Byetta, we certainly want to share, especially to you and Matt, sort of navigating this budget during this really hard time with a lot of moving pieces, thank you for kind of spearheading that, and for working so closely with our town to really collaborate with kind of numbers, so.
Yeah, I really think it shows, and I'd like to publicly just back you, back your comment, I think that the coordination between myself and Matt with Mike Units and James, those meetings that we were having only led to us having really good conversations about doing what we think is right in the best interest, but also based on the information that we have, and that's really, and FinCom is representing a budget on Saturday at the town meeting, that really is based upon the information that we have.
Any further discussion, comments? So are there any comments, any public comments? I don't see any, Jen, great, so then we're going to move on to the announcement of Coordinator of Special Education, Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, as you know, we've restructured everything to do with special education this year, the Director of SEL and Guidance at the High School, Vinnie Cersei, has moved into Gene Sullivan's position as Director of PPS, and so therefore, we've reshuffled his position into more of a Coordinator of Special Education, I'm proud to announce this evening that she's actually on the call with us, Ms. Cassandra Russo, she goes by Casey, she's been with us as a team Chairperson, recommended for hire through Gene Sullivan and Kathy Luke over at the LGN, and been really great for us, she also has some experience in the private school sector and public school sector, including some curriculum development and directorship in the private school, so Casey, I don't know if you want to say anything, but welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited to take on this new role, and especially in these interesting times of C-19 and trying to navigate the world that way, it's going to be interesting, but I'm very excited for the opportunity, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome. Any additional discussion?
No, we're just, she's, last July 1st, she's already been in with Vinnie Cersei and Gene, and I think there's probably going to be a few closets full of things for her to do right away on day one, so we're looking forward to working with her, she brings a lot of good experience, and it's going to be, I think, a nice dynamic team for us to move some things forward and continue to support the nice things that we're doing in the district.
It sounds like it's going to be a great fit, so thank you and welcome, nothing like sort of jumping right in, right?
Carolyn, can I just mention real quick, I just want to say welcome, welcome first to you, but I also just want to take a minute to say goodbye to Gene, I know this is our last meeting.
Hey, listen, it's coming at the end, hold on a minute, Byetta, it's not getting all emotional.
I'm not going to let you cry.
We're not going to let you cry in the middle, Sheri, we're going to...
I worked up the nerve to say goodbye before I started crying.
I actually brought my tissues with you because I knew you were going to.
You're all so funny.
I can run some over, Sheri.
What'd you say?
Sheri, I can deliver some real quick.
Does he seem to forget that he's still got an evaluation coming up? He should be a little nicer to you, Sheri.
I know, fine, continue on, Gene, I just wanted you to know I was, you know, ready to, prepared to say goodbye to you.
Thank you, Sheri, now I'll prepare myself.
Sheri, I might be following in your footsteps, so as sort of the Chairperson, especially at graduation, so watch out. We're going to move on to the vote of the F20 end-of-the-year financials, Matt?
Okay, so I gave them to you a two-page document, the vote's going to be actually on the second page, but on the first page, I wanted to show you that we have the 2.5% budget for FY21, on the bottom section, it shows how we were reaching that $748,000 from the 8% budget we had originally voted, we have $475,000 in reductions for salary discussions, we removed new positions for $279,000, retirements of $110,000, we did, we're not filling with kindergarten teachers, we're recognizing the savings from retirements, we're not reducing fees in transportation or athletics, there's a choice carryover from the spending freeze of $162,000, and then the last two items, I'll explain a little bit more on page two as well, $65,000 of additional school choice support for the budget, and $419,000 of circuit breaker carryover support, and that, those reductions and additional revenues helped us to reach the $748,000. Any questions on that? Okay, so on page two, this is the math of the FY2020 closing at this point, so after clearing a lot of purchase orders during the past couple of months, we have a bottom line number, balance of $1.384 million, our, what we've done is we've done some journal entries, we removed $150,000 worth of expenses out of the facility rental, we recognize in FY20, the majority of what feeds that account is revenue from Champions, and when we closed down the schools, we also closed down Champions, we lost somewhere in the neighborhood of an estimated $80,000 to $100,000 during that three-month period, we don't know what the year is going to bring as far as whether parents are going to utilize that service, or what the cost is going to be to meet the standards required by the state, so we want to put in some money there to protect the... So we want to put in some money there to protect the facility account, uh, in case their, the Champions revenue does dry up a little bit. Uh, Little Land District, it's the same thing. We're not quite sure what the enrollment's going to be completely there. Uh, so we moved $100,000 worth of expenses into appropriation, uh, for that. Transportation, again, another unknown. Um, if we are limited to the number of, uh, riders we can have on, on the buses, we may lose our pay-to-ride capabilities. So without, we normally take in about $175,000. That revenue supports the total budget for transportation. So, uh, with the transportation, we only had about $100,000 worth of expenses we could move out as we, we made, um, the refunds this year. Uh, so another portion is going to jump in down in, in the, uh, school choice portion. Um, athletics, with no spring sports, uh, we, we've completely depleted that account. We normally need about $30,000 to $50,000 to start that account, uh, for purchasing for sports, so we've reinstated that $50,000. Uh, the school choice, uh, we're moving $252,000 worth of expenses out of that, increasing that balance. Um, we would possibly, if transportation is an issue, we're going to use $75,000 of that to help support the transportation, um, which would be about $177,000 of additional school choice balance that we'd be building, uh, net of that possible adjustment. And then the circuit breaker, we've moved about $500,000 worth of expenses out of there. That creates a $718,000 balance in the, in the circuit breaker account. Uh, we are planning $419,000 worth of that money to support the FY21 budget, which will leave us with about a $299,000 contingency for special education in that account. Um, bottom line, that's about $1.159 million that we have moved out of revolving funds into the appropriation account, uh, which would leave a balance in appropriations of $225,000, which, uh, we would return to the town, and that's what we would like a vote on today.
Um, Dines, did you?
Can I, so can I have some clarification on the transportation and school choice intersection?
Sure. Uh, so the, so we, initially, what I wanted to do is have $175,000 in transportation to support the potential for, if no fee, uh, fee-to-ride is done next year. If we have no fee-to-ride and we don't have that $175,000, we won't be able to pay the bus bill, um, because even though we are reducing the number of riders, we'll still need the same, the same number of buses because they would, if it's possible, we're limited to 12 or 24 on the bus in total, on a bus that can hold 47 riders. Um, so we have $100,000 that's in the transportation account, and because we didn't have enough expenses to move out of the transportation account, some of the, the money we, we bumped up the school choice in case we needed to have that, those funds.
So, so I'm trying to understand, so your, your suggestion is that we'll take money from school choice to cover an expense overage on busing, on transportation?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I, I would, I would vociferously argue against that. I, I, I do not believe that school choice funds are supposed to be used in that manner. And while I, while I say this all the time, I understand that money is fungible. I get that. However, I, I have spoken directly to Desi in the past about this, and, and their, their guidance, it's not a restriction, but their guidance is that this is not used for a general operating expense like that. I know people do. I get it. Um, however, I think it is a mistake to do that.
What are our other choices?
Well, I agree, uh, like you said, uh, money is, you know, fungible, so we could, you know, support, um, other appropriation expenses with that money, um, and then that would free up funds to be able to pay the transportation in, in the event that we don't have the revenues coming in.
I, I get it's a, yeah, I get it's, it, that it's semantics, but I, I, I believe we are setting a very bad precedent when we start paying for operational expenses like this using school choice money. I, I know I say it all the time, and I know you guys all know exactly how I feel about this, but I think it's a mistake. It, it was not the intention of, of the school committee when we first, when we first authorized school choice to use this money in this way. I know we've had to do it a couple of times, more than a couple of times now in the past. It, it is, it is a mistake, and it is going to eventually bite us in the back.
So, um, if you were to kind of move that, Matt, so we don't use the school choice money, does it, what would be the reason why we wouldn't have done that in the beginning? Was there a reason why you wouldn't, um, or, or why as sort of a school department, we would have done it differently?
Uh, building, you mean building the transportation line instead of the school choice?
Right.
The reason was we, we, we simply, because we did the refund this year, um, when we didn't do the transportation, we, we had $175,000 worth of expenses there, but after we've done, we did the refund and moved expenses out, we only had, um, 100, between 100 and $125,000 in that account that we could move. And we can't do a negative journal entry in moving expenses. It, it really was an accounting issue. Um, we just didn't have the money that we could move back.
Do we, do we prepay sped expenses for the following year at all? I, I believe you can prepay up to a certain amount, correct?
Yeah, so you can, you can prepay three months' worth of, uh, private special education, and you can pay, um, a full year's worth of collaborative special education, uh, expenses. Uh, we haven't done that. I don't think we've done that in Norton. Uh, I've done it in the past in other school districts that I've worked in.
We, we have to be, this is the reason why we've been in a financial mess for decades. The idea of prepaying allows for the town of Norton's taxpayers to get away without paying its proportional share of special education costs within a budget. And so if you prepay, what you're basically doing is you're eliminating the idea, you're taking, you're, first of all, you're taking an estimate of costs.
Joe, hear me out, though, because this is where I'm going with this. So rather than take the $75,000, was it $75,000 that you wanted to?
Approximately, yeah, yeah, right around $75,000.
Can, can we rather than take the $75,000 out of school choice, since we're looking at 225, that we're, we're saying, okay, well, that's a savings, can't we take 75 out of that 225, prepay that sped tuition for next year, and then essentially give back, uh, 150 to the town and cover that, that potential transportation expense and not take it out of our school choice?
I would make the argument that now you're setting a precedent of going backwards to an, an issue that we've had before.
I, I, I hear you, but I mean, I think we're kind of in a, you know, in a really specific situation here, right? Like, we're not going to have savings in the future, and that's not, just not realistic.
If you set the precedent of prepaying, that means when you're getting zero or minus 5% budgets like you've had in the past, you're funding special education and everything else gets thrown out the window.
Yeah, no, I know.
That's my concern.
And, and I will say, like, it, it just predates pretty much, uh, it predates, uh, yeah, Gene doesn't probably predict.
We, we have, no, I've been here too long. We have been in that cycle of prepay in the past, and it, it, it created a nightmare.
But, but do you, Gene, it was, it was a large number. It was, I can't remember, I can't remember.
It was like $400,000.
It was, it was close to half a million dollars. And what happened was we had a year where there was a, not, not a, not a, you know, small number, not a zero, but it was a negative number. And it, and kind of, that, that kind of saved our budgets because we had already prepaid. But, Joe, it's, I, I will, I'll defer to you on this, if you, if you feel strongly that that's not a path we want to take.
My con, so my concern would be that, so two parts here. My, my biggest concern is I would not normally not make a recommendation. As you know, the will of the committee has not been to you, it's, we face, it's fun. But I am in a pandemic situation that has somewhat changed everything. So that's one part. My biggest concern is this is the second district that I've walked into where this prepay concept has caused financial nightmares in terms of how to take care of special education. And, and I'll give you an example. If this year you have a great year and you're able to take your circuit breaker and at the end of the fiscal year, half a, half a million dollars, and you decide that you're going to take and prepay half a million dollars, the following year, you start at zero. You have to be lucky enough to have savings in that account to then grow that number again. But you're always counting on trying to make sure that there isn't another kid that walks in from another district or transfers in, and that's what happens. You get lucky, lucky, and then the day you don't get lucky, you end up in a financial nightmare.
Yeah.
And so if you drive it as a, you know, the whole idea of prepaying any bill, to me, begins to start the process of, and I know you can't prepay, you pay regular bills, you can do it for special tuition, blah, blah, blah. But like this year, if you decided that you were going to prepay, um, um, X number of dollars, then you are already, you already created a negative for the following fiscal year. That's my biggest concern.
Well, I'm only suggesting it because we have the $225,000 staring us in the face that we're, we're looking to return back to the town. And, I mean, 70/30 split, so 1, 160 of that, 150, 55 of it, it should, should be coming back to us anyways.
I, I would make the argument that the last few years where we, uh, had one year where we had eight students coming into the district, of which we already budgeted for two, we were running a negative for six, and we had to go back to Town Meeting for $293,000, which we, we got support from and we received. I think returning this money while also taking care of our ledgers clearly articulates that we did save money from the closure and everything else. Don't forget, there were, there were two articles in this Town Meeting that we withdrew. One for a negative in transportation, special education for over $160,000, and another for, um, uh, substitutes that was over $200,000 before we closed because of the number of staff that we had out sick and maternity leaves. So I think it's a good number, a fair number to return while also not zeroing out budgets. Um, we don't know what the fall's going to look like, so, but we do know that at minimum there's going to be probably a, a, a significant, uh, free cash number in the fall. We're going to have to have some real discussions about how that money is used because FY22, I think, is going to be the real problem, because I don't think there's going to be federal money for FY22. Right now, some of the COVID money has to be used by December 20 of this year, some of it has to be used by December of '21, or September of '21, excuse me. So, um, the safe way out is, we know, for example, that the $60,000 negative on that account of using it from school choice has already been made up by the 10 extra kids that we've already enrolled under school choice for September. We'll get that money, we'll already have that money in the next fiscal year. So that would be my argument to stay with the recommendation.
Yeah, you make some fair, some fair points about returning the monies to the town and that sort of thing to do, and I, and I, I don't disagree with you, and I don't, I don't make this suggestion lightly by any stretch of imagination, but, um, it, I think it goes to, to show you exactly how strong I feel about not using school choice for these operational expenses. And, and the only thing I would say to that last one, Joe, is I don't want to get into a situation where we start by saying, well, you know, we have more money coming in next year, so it's okay to use this year. But anyways, I, I said my piece about it. I think, I think, again, it's, this isn't a new story for anybody. Everybody here knows exactly how I feel about using school choice in the fall, so. I'll still vote for you, Blaschek.
Is there any further?
I just, I really have to get the mistakes.
Is there any further discussion? Any additional comments? So we need to take a vote on this budget?
Yeah, you're taking a vote, um, on the, um, returning to the town $225,429. As we see our numbers between now and June 30th, I mean, it could change slightly, could be, it's typically going to be probably another 20, 30 grand more just because of the way the end of the year bills go and so on and so forth, but, uh, this is what we, we feel is what the numbers are adding up to be. It does require a vote.
Okay, um, so is there a motion to approve the FY20 end-of-the-year financials as presented by Mr. Wells?
So.
Thank you.
Kathleen and then Dan.
Any further discussion? Any public discussion? Nope, not seeing any, Jen. Um, so we will take a vote. Um, Carolyn Gallagher, yes. Let's see, Sherry Cohen?
Yes.
Dines?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to the vote of the, um, the vote on the FY20 summer transfers.
So before Matt starts, um, this is just to make sure that, you know how we always get these requests where we do transfers, if we have to do a transfer in the summertime? And then I get these open, um, uh, Freedom of Information asks, requests. This would allow for me, the moment I make the transfer prior to your vote, this allows for me to do that transfer. Of course, I communicate it to you, but because we don't typically meet, this allows for us to release all the information and do it and not have to worry about, um, the vote.
Okay.
And again, I would only make the change by sending you guys an email, and then if, if there was a concern, then we would post a 48-hour meeting and have the debate and so on and so forth.
Okay. So, Matt?
Uh, so yeah, um, first day regulations, uh, the school page is required to vote for transfers. So we're requesting, uh, an approval, uh, for transfers to be made between, uh, the date of this meeting and the end of our fiscal year so we can close out on July 13.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, thank you, Sherry. Any comment, additional comments? Not seeing any, um, any public comments? Not seeing any. So a vote to approve the FY20 summer transfers as presented by Mr. Wells. Um, let's see, Dines?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen? Um, Dan?
Yes.
Carolyn, yes, and Kathleen, well, she's muted.
I'm here, yes.
Great, thanks, Kathleen. Um, we will move on to the superintendent's evaluation, Dr. Byetta.
Thank you. I did send that per the request of a couple of you electronically. I hope you all got it. Um, I'm just looking to see, um, with us potentially not meeting until July, um, and Carolyn, you coming in as the chair, just, uh, the process traditionally has been, uh, that the, that the four of you communicate your thoughts, um, to Carolyn. Uh, the moment you do that, by the way, it is considered public record. Um, and then Carolyn, as the chair, makes a summation, she then presents it to me, we have a discussion, and then it goes to a public record and a public vote. Um, so we would potentially do that. Um, one of the things we've been trying to do is have a shorter turnaround time, so I don't know what you folks think is an appropriate turnaround time to get it done. We don't want to wait until September to do it, which is, happens in the past, it seems like it's hanging over our heads. I'll defer to the chair on, what do you think the best time is to get it done?
I know that at our last, um, meeting, Dr. Byetta, you had made a comment that you would have, um, really appreciated it as being done by the end of June.
Yes.
No guarantee that that could happen, but I think that we logistically could get it done, um, relatively quickly, um, within sort of the first, you know, week or two of July. Um, if, if everybody else is on board for that. Personally, if I'm going to be overseeing it, I'd rather just get it done and not have it lingering. Um, so if we could, you know, maybe work together to, um, get that completed by sort of mid-July, would that work as a potential date that gives us about two and a half, three weeks?
I'm good.
Is that okay with everyone else? I don't know if there's any other comments or concerns about that timeline.
Carolyn, I've sent mine to Kathleen already, so.
Okay, so.
I can.
Yeah, I'll forward it to you, no problem.
Kathleen, if you want to keep it, you can, um.
Be on the hook.
I'll sign it, I'll sign it.
I was thinking maybe you had completed it for today, so, um, but yeah, we can definitely, if, if comments have already come in and, and we can just sort of pull, um, all of those comments. Certainly, Kathleen, if you want to forward that to me, that would be great, or anything that you've already done, I'd be happy to just work with you to kind of complete it, so.
Yeah, no problem, we can, we can pick a day next week, get.
Okay, that sounds great, Kathleen. So we should have that done, um, sort of relatively efficiently, Dr. Byetta, if that works. Um, and then, let's see, I think we are ready for other business.
So I just want to, I'll, I'll send out an email through Terry, but we're looking at the 23rd to 30th of July and then the 13th to 20th of August. It's just tentative dates for things that may come up because this is a different year because of everything that's going on, and that would be virtually, and it would be posted and all that, and of course, only if we have to have the committee involved. Otherwise, I will continuously do what I do, which is to try to give you a weekly update of what's going on and give you information, and that could also be a request for a meeting, um, if it's really, uh, what folks want to do. Um, Champions is going to be opening at the Yellow Elementary School. Um, we are working with them on that right now. Um, we are working with them on that right now. This is actually a great opportunity for us to take a look at what's successful and what needs to be further tweaked. So I want to thank uh them for um really getting themselves moving. They've already been approved, if you will, to start the process. Uh, they'll be working with Wade. Uh, I think Wade knows that he's probably gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna feel like the window project all over again. Because I think his crew is going to be all over the place this summer. Um, but that'll give us some good information. Just wanted to give you that. Um, they're tentatively looking to start, I believe, around the thirteenth of July, if I remember the date correctly. Yeah, that's correct, okay. Um. The reopening of school, I just, I did do a parent message today verbally for myself. I also sent an email with the guidelines to both the staff and families. Um, I just thought it was important for everybody to get the same piece of information. What that means to us is that our three subcommittees that I announced to you folks a few weeks ago is pretty much the same thing, uh, just different names. Um, we'll use the governor's uh and the commissioner's release of those names and by tomorrow, we'll do final selections. I know Sherry, you're going to be on the committee and Carolyn, you're on the committee and Kathleen's already on the. Ask force committee, the one that'll oversee the whole thing. Um, and um, you know, there, there's going to be a lot of um opinions. About what this is all going to look like. But right now, the, the tentative idea is to put plans into place in three different areas. Uh, a reopening of school with all kinds of health and safety requirements. A hybrid model where students would spend time not only uh in school, but out of school and be having teaching and learning. And then the remote, which is learning from home. Um, I think at another level than the level that we've done, um, not only in Norton, but throughout the state. And part of that is, uh, as you may have, if you tweeted or read it, um, there's a lot of questions about things such as. Um, accommodation of the flu, would see nineteen and a lot of, you know, it's a lot alike in many ways. Um, and what does that mean? Um, and then the impact on staff. Um, I think one of the, the things that we've done is we've tried to communicate with parents all along. Um, as much as we could with the information that we had. Um, we will have uh two virtual town halls during the month of July with families. I'll be publishing those uh the week of the sixth. Um, so that uh parents uh can have input um into the process. We'll be releasing a family survey the week, uh, around the week of the sixth or the thirteenth to gather information. Um, and of course, we'll, I'll do the same thing with our staff. Um, and staff's important because we do have unions and unions have working conditions, uh, requirements. Um, and so there's a potential that we have to open and renegotiate contracts as part of significant changes that could be made um going forward. Um, there'll be a lot of comparisons, there already is. Uh, there'll be uh opinions. Uh, there'll be folks who don't want to send their children to school. We've been asked to have plans for that on day one. Uh, we've been asked to make sure that we're working with families as much as possible. There is no current guidance on transportation. Physical education, wellness, or athletics. Those three topics are still up in the air. For further guidance later on this summer, anticipating sometime in July. Um, and then last, um, is uh the impact that this may have if in fact we start and then have to close down again. And the potential that the closure could be even longer than it was this time. Um, because of when, um, when this will um potentially hit us. So, um. Right now, their general information, um, you have the report that's been published. I wanted you to have that. The public has it, that's informed. Um, been informed by us, the parents. Um, and we're going to do our best to put together three great plans and publish them with everybody and everybody and be ready to go for September. Um. I know Zoe and Malia are on tonight and I know we didn't ask them for any thoughts, uh, because we didn't have them on the agenda, but um, I don't know if they, Zoe or Malia, if you folks have any. Anything that you guys want to add? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Uh, I just have one thing. I went to, I have a cousin that's in the middle school and they just did their parade drive-by.
Yes.
I want to say that was like really fun. I know, um. Mister Beer, maybe he had a squirt gun and he was shooting the kids with the water and it was a really fun thing to do. So I know it's like. It's kind of like what they did for the graduation, but it was definitely fun.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, I didn't see that, but that sounds fun.
We also have a question um that was asked about C nineteen um funds that are coming in and I had asked the person to identify themselves, so thank you for identifying yourself for the record. The question was what percentage of COVID nineteen state funds has been allocated to the schools? Out of that percentage, how much funding has been directed toward Norton Public Schools? How will this number impact drop security? So, impact on drop security, I'll start with that. Right now, the way um the funding is going is that we have two CARES Acts, one which I call the Municipal CARES Act. Which right now, we've put in for over seven hundred thousand dollars worth of technology and all of that stuff to make sure we're ready for um September. Um, but we cannot put positions in those, in that funding. We can however allocate funding for substitutes. For someone who has to leave their job because they get C nineteen. We have in fact put some funds into that. That's a one point seven five million dollar uh CARES Act to the town. Then there's a direct grant through DESI CARES Act for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It's actually calculated via Title I funds. In that particular one, we have broken it down into um working within our special populations to play catch-up, if you will, in terms of assessments. Uh, testing and all of that throughout the summer. Um, we've put in for, and Jen, you're on here, you might, you, you might have the specifics on you so that we can enter into the record.
Sure. Um, we did a hundred thousand dollars um targeted specifically for SLPAs and um CODAs to support. Some of our um specialized services and making sure that we're supporting students um that receive those services. We did about fifty thousand dollars um for testing and helping to um catch up with evaluations over the summer. Um, that could potentially also look at kindergarten screening, depending on how we choose to do those types of things. Um, there's twenty-five thousand dollars within the grant for curriculum development and professional development for our staff. If we have to bring people in over the summer to do training or to design curriculum. Um, and then the remaining, it's about eleven thousand is um leftover for instructional software. Um, we do also have to work with our private school partners for that grant. So for example, the Legacy Christian Academy is located here in town. Um, so they get a small portion of that based on their enrollment.
Great, thanks for that, uh, Jen. Um, and then the third part, um, so that particular one has positions. We have one point five uh speech assistants that we're going to be going after. And one point five occupational therapists that we're going to go after with those funds. So. The following year, we're going to have to have a serious discussion about how it's funded. And then um, to the panelist's question, there is a potential, as released today. For what would be called a DESI CARES Act, which is they're taking the state money and they're sending it directly to schools. And that is currently going to be earmarked at two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. For C nineteen direct response. So that would be things such as, um, do we need to cha- uh change out desks? Um, do we potentially have to change out uh more technology? Do we have to do something with transportation? Those are funds that could potentially come from there. The problem with those funds is that right now, they're saying those also have to be expended by December of twenty twenty. So again, no staffing could come out of that. We're hoping that that changes. That's a half a million dollars to the town of Norton, or specifically to the school department. Um, and again, directly related to C nineteen um situations. So again, it's not for um positions because you, you know, what do you do after December? Where's the money come from if you do in fact hire? So you got two grants, municipal and then one direct to us. No staffing. And then you got one that allows for us to do some staffing and we've targeted trying to play. Not only catch-up, but also be more effective in the future with how to provide services onto the speech and occupational therapist. Thank you for that question. Um, and then lastly, um. You know, it's been, uh, it's been a long time that Ms. Sullivan's been around. Um, I think we've tried to say goodbye a couple of different times, but this is such an awkward way of saying goodbye because, you know, we're in the office and we're typically towing around each other and wearing masks. You know, like, but I do want to take um a, a second. Um, to thank her, um, not only um for her leadership and her guidance, uh, you know, um, her support. For making me a better leader because she constantly reminds me it's about the kids first and foremost. Um, for fighting for the kids that she is responsible for, to make sure they have the best program. For caring about her staff, um, going out of the way to make sure that, making, making sure that. They know that she cares and wants to do good things even when she has her hands tied because I might have said no and she said yes. Um, and for being a friend. I, I've gotten to know Jean personally. Um, very little before I, I came to Norton, except my connection to my wife, um, who works for Jean um for many years. Um. And so we wish her well. Um, and we hope that we can uh do something more social in the future. It's been eighteen years. I'll get it right, eleven years as the director, seven years in, in uh supporting uh students. Um, but um Jean keeps us uh nice and even. Uh, um, I, I have a nickname for her, but I'm not going to say it because she'll be upset in my last meeting for saying it, but. Um, she's uh, she's the senior member of the, of the group and um she keeps us at an even keel, um, especially people like me. So Jean, thank you for your service, your time and. Um. I've, I hate to say it this way, but you can't get rid of me because I'm going to be your boss again because I'm going to be on the board, so I'll see you there.
Don't you worry, I'll be calling you often. And thank you for all of that. And thank you to all of you. It's, you know, you've made it easy to do, do what I need to do and to advocate for, for my kids and my staff. Um, Norton is always going to hold a special place in my heart and honestly, I am still not really believing that I'm leaving, even though my office is echoing and. It's um pretty empty, so thank you.
So Jean, I just wanted to say as, as the CPAC um liaison for a few years now, I think you do a fantastic job. I, I don't know how they're going to do that part without you. Um, Miss Russo has some big shoes to fill. Mr. Cersei, they better be ready. And um, it was, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Jean, you will be missed. You, you've just been awesome. Um, and I really can't say much more because I will cry and it'll be embarrassing on a Zoom meeting, but you will be missed. I hope that we can uh still stay in touch and. And you've been a huge uh asset to Norton, so thank you for everything.
Absolutely, thank you, Sherry.
Shut up, Joe. He's so much. He's interrupting our moment.
I think, um, before we sort of shut down, Jean, you were taking Sherry and I on a tour and we never actually got our tour and now, um, you're leaving, so.
But when we can, I'd love to join it.
Yes, that sounds great. So all the best. It will be very different not having you here, but we wish you really well, so. And Dinesh, I'll miss Jean too. Did you notice that change? Dinesh is always kind of keeping us on our toes to see what he's thinking, so um. But thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Um, can I? Um, so I just wanted to ask Wade a question if it's okay. Um, Wade, I know that we have our um town meeting on Saturday. I was wondering how sort of that planning process has been going for you. I know. Um, at one point, you had sort of said it would be a nice kind of, um, I think. Try to see how we do for graduation, kind of um getting prepared for town meeting might help us learn a little bit about. Getting prepared for graduation. And I was wondering how all of the planning was going and um. How that was working with you and your staff and having it on the school and outside and six feet apart and all of those rules.
It's been a, a good collaboration, uh, working with the town. Um, Christian Zahn, the Board of Health, um. Director has really done a wonderful job. I think he's thought of just about everything. Um, I, I think it's going to be fantastic. I mean, the weather was the only thing that could have really hurt us and uh, and it looks like it's going to be good in the morning, so. Uh, we've done a lot to prepare for this, uh, and, and, and I do believe that this will be a good trial run for our graduation ceremony, so. Um, it's nine o'clock, uh, start time, nine o'clock on Saturday morning. Um, we'll be there early setting up, getting ready for it. Um, hopefully, I think it's going to be a good turnout. I think it's going to be a quick meeting. Um, I think the articles were sent to Matt today and uh. Uh, they shortened it up a little bit, so I, I, I think it's going to be a good, a good day. Um, I think we're, we're really prepared for this, so we'll see what happens.
So basically, we have no concern potentially at this point of having to do anything different for our graduation, right? And we have a lot of seniors and families who are so looking forward to July twenty-fifth. So it is going to be a trial run, but I guess um we're all keeping our fingers crossed that all goes well on Saturday for town meeting. Um, which would then sort of just give us that extra boost of confidence that graduation will be just as sort of thoughtfully planned and ready to go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually excited for graduation. I, I think it's really going to be special. It's going to be different, but I think it's really going to be special and obviously our, the team has put together a, a great, um, great plan, so it's, it's going to be fun. Uh, everything the kids deserve.
Well, thank you so much, Wade, for everything. Um, I'm not sure if anybody else has comments, but I, I also wanted to um. Publicly thank and Matt, if you could sort of share with our lunch crew and um Mike Raccaro. Just um, if you follow them on social media, they have been truly um the most amazing assets during this really crazy time. Um, I think you probably, everybody who's part of um kind of in attendance of our school committee meetings. You know that it's been really important to all of us, I think on the school committee, um, that we support. Our children and our families, but anybody who has any sort of food insecurity, and they have been nothing but wonderful. So. Um, if you could sort of share with them our level of appreciation, that would be great. And I know there's some discussion happening um at the select board meeting tonight as well, kind of thinking about how to move forward. But I don't know if there's any thoughts that you wanted to share, Matt?
Uh, well, I think we, we were kind of anticipating that that program was going to start to really wind down by this time. We thought the phasing, the phased opening of the state was going to have people back at work, but. We haven't seen a considerable drop in it, so that's, that's why we're kind of, you know, MEMA late. This week, uh, on Monday, late on the day, they finally sent in a request for extension, knowing that a, a lot of towns are, are kind of facing the same situation. Um, the food service crew is absolutely incredible. Uh, what they've been doing is almost making, you know, a, a, an emergency food situation be fun. Um, and, and people look forward to going and seeing them. Um, even the seniors, they, they, they love interacting with, with Mike and with the crew, so. Um, it, it's been a fantastic program and I'll, I'll certainly extend your thoughts to them.
Thank you. Dr. Bayana, is there any additional comments?
Eight-thirty, Saturday morning. Um. And for the school committee, uh, on the bleachers, Mr. Savas underneath the bleachers at eight-thirty. Joe, do you guys want to meet inside, uh, to get started in a room first? Um, do you want to? We got posted for the football field, so we'll be on the field. Yeah, right now, unless the FinCon makes a change or something gets a surprise between today and, or tomorrow before the meeting, uh, it's. It's, um, there's a, um, a bunch of questions that are going to be moved to go back to committee and then it's just basically capital and the operations money, so um. You know, most, some, some are, it's all going to depend on, on who shows up and what question it's on. That's at nine AM, Saturday, the twenty-seventh. Please consider attending. It's an open town meeting for Norton citizens who are registered voters.
It looks like um a lot of other towns have been doing very similar town meetings, if you sort of see on the news or part of social media. Um, a lot of outside town meetings, people very nicely spaced apart. Um, so. Everybody seems to be navigating kind of the regulations really well. Um, and um. So we will have our school committee meeting at eight-thirty, followed um at nine o'clock with town meeting, so.
Correct.
Any additional comments? Any public comments? Nope, I don't see any, so we can motion to adjourn our school committee meeting for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Let's see, um, Dinesh?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye, yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan? Thanks, Kathleen. Dan? Dan, you're muted.
Yes.
Thanks, Dan. And Carolyn, yes. So have a nice night, everybody. We'll see you on Saturday morning.
Take care. Thanks all.
Good night.
Kathleen?
Night, guys.